Okay, are we done? About 6:59. Very punctual.
Okay, are we ready?
What?
They called the meeting to order. Mike, could you please call Rolf?
Ms. Bennecke. Dr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Dross. Mr. Essenbauer.
Here.
Ms. Hollywood.
Here.
Mr. Knuckles.
Here.
Ms. Sodder.
Here.
Vice President Ho-Kerl.
Here.
President Crook.
Here. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mike, could you please read the statement concerning open public meetings?
Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given by the superintendent of schools in the following manner. On January 10th, 2024, notice of this meeting was posted on the interior of the school administration offices, 95 Grove Street, Haddonfield. Written notice was submitted and filed to Haddonfield Borough Clerk, and notices were emailed to the carrier post in the retrospect room.
Thank you. I'd like to make a special welcome to Matt Ritter, who is our new, oh, there he is, man of the hour, our newest board member. Welcome. We're excited to have Matt return. He had previously been a member, took a little hiatus, couldn't stand being away. Now he's back.
See you January 6th.
Thank you for coming. Okay, so we're going to get to the student representative reports. Today, we have May Hurley, and we know that you're going to be coming next month, right? But we're going to officially, not, we're going to unofficially say thank you very much. So we have May Hurley and Vienna Moyer here, now are here, and then we have Emily Woolley. Is she not here? I don't see her. Okay. So, thank you so much for your service, and we look forward to seeing you next week. Do you present, or next month, do you present next month?
No.
Or you can do members well.
But January is School Board Appreciation Month. So we've really got us back for School Board Appreciation Month.
And you swear in new oath, right?
I swear in new oath, same time.
All right.
All right. So, to start off, Spirit Week ended the last week before we went on break. We raised a total of $21,273 across all the grades, and the can drive saw a huge success with around 6,000 pounds donated. The seal of Bible literacy was held yesterday. There were 62 students assessed across French, German, Ukrainian, and Spanish. I don't know if you guys know about this one, but the referendum actually passed. I know you guys don't know that. It's like a small news around here. But students are happy, and they're putting out things around the school that they're excited to see change.
Oh, that's awesome.
The Madrigals are wrapping up this weekend with their dessert theater shows. There's three of them, and I think the tickets are sold out, actually. They're very excited. Colleges are coming back with more and more results every day, so people are, you know, scared and excited. It's a little mix of both. And then, winter sports are starting up. The winter track, swim, basketball, crew, and cheer have begun. The cheer team is actually holding, actually just held its first ever tryouts with over 50 girls trying out to be on the JV and varsity squads. Forty-seven of them, I think, stayed and are now on those teams. A senior on the team, actually, I was talking to her about it, and they were saying that this is kind of exciting for them because the cheer team got a very big gain in kind of the amount of people going out for it, and she said she's very excited for the upcoming cheer season and to have many girls create a long-lasting program. And among that, I actually got Mr. Bogard, who's taught here for 35 years, he got his opinion on it, and he said he's never seen this many cheerleaders and is excited to see the spirit and excitement they are bringing to the school and what they will do next. So, I'm in hype for the cheer team coming. And finally, the interest meetings and information regarding the next Board of Ed representatives has begun, and the interviews and speeches and process will need to proceed.
Talk about pounds of food. Why, do you know why would you pound rather than number of cans? You used to do number of cans.
Isn't it like, there's some things that are more valuable?
Yeah, so, so we give the food, the food back, and you used to do, you do number of cans, we get 10,000 cans. But then it came to the point where people trying to win would buy the cream, candy cream corn for sale in Wedmonds, which is, doesn't do any, many good. Right? So now, if you bring peanut butter or tuna fish, it counts as three points versus one. So it's all set up to give not just as much stuff as you can give in the food back, but stuff that really matters. Like peanut butter, the food back, peanut butter is gold, right? Stays a long time, so that's why that's set up.
Rather than parts of pounds.
Because part of my, part of my, how many, how many pounds?
About 6,000?
6,000, sorry, about 6,000 pounds of peanut butter. It's the whole front of the school.
That's fantastic. Great, it's not bad.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, so are you excited for your winter break coming up?
Oh, yeah. It's 13 days, I think.
It's a long.
It's a long one, I think, yeah, especially senior year, you're ready, right?
Just sit down.
Thank you. Okay, so next, we're going to move on to our presentations for the elementary school band performances for Central and Haddon. Hi.
Way over there.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps, is this your first 4B performance?
Yes.
Okay, so, this is yourself, but I also want you to introduce your performers.
Yeah, it was like someone said that you won the camera, or the camera recording you. Oh, it is.
I'm fine. I teach band at Long Island making schools. I have the privilege of teaching lots of great musicians, but especially from Lizzie Haddon, Alice Carpanci, and Caroline Bills, and at Central School, Finn Dubrowski and Andrew Bellis. They've been incredible, they've been in band for the past two years now. Our pleasure to have, not just because they're awesome musicians, but they're also really awesome kids that are just really, really beautiful. So let's give them another happy ending.
Thank you so much for coming. Wonderful job. Okay, moving on. Mr. DiDonato always gets the tough act to follow. Usually something musical, and now we're going Something musical, and now we're going to have the science audit from 2020, from 2024, 2025 recommendations, Mr. DiDonato.
Great, thank you, everybody, for having me here tonight. I'm excited to present the first round of recommendations for our science audit. We're doing a K-12 science audit this year, and one of the things we're looking at is instruction, teaching, and learning across the gamut, from kindergarten to high school. A lot of our recommendations will be coming in March, and we have like a first preview of recommendations, that that's what this is right now, specifically about the high school, relevant to course taking and the course sequence. And the reason we're presenting this a little early is we split our audit into two parts, and course selection for the high school starts in January, and so we wanted to make recommendations now so that these changes can take place starting in September. If we had waited until the end of the audit, we would have had to wait till the 26th, 27th of the year, which doesn't, you know, we recognize some, we need some changes, so we want to put those changes in place. So you'll hear more about question one in March, but this is one of the main things we're looking at, is how does our science program align with the values of a 21st century science education as outlined by the Next Generation Science Standards, which New Jersey's adopted as our state standards? So you'll hear about that a lot in March. For specifically in the high school, we have a question here that's, are we, are we taking that vision of science education and are all of our students, do all of our students have access to it? And are we addressing all of the performance expectations outlined in the state standards? So just a little background about the state standards, because it's relevant to some of the changes we're making. The state standards are broken into disciplinary core ideas. There's also science and engineering practices and cross-cutting concepts that we'll talk more about in March, but for the purpose of this, the content itself is broken into four domains. We have physical science, which makes up physics and chemistry, life science, which is biology and environmental science, earth and space science, which encompasses geology, astronomy, and environmental science, and then we also have engineering and technology, which is intended to be integrated into all of those other disciplines. And that's important because when we talk about course taking, we talk about what does it look like to have an education representative of the standards? We're going to need to make sure that we're hitting all of those. So here's our current practice for what we do at the high school. Currently, at the high school, we require three years of science, as is required by the state. So for us, that means 17 credits based on the number, or at least 17 credits based on the extra lab periods that we have. Students take biology as freshmen. They can take CP accelerated or resource, then they can take chemistry as a sophomore, and then they get more choice in their junior year. So students can take physics, they can choose to take environmental science. We have CP and AP environmental science. They can take AP biology, AP chemistry, any of those things. And then in addition, we have some discipline-specific electives that you see on the board. Right now, we require biology and chemistry, and then the students can take whatever else they want as long as they're filling a third year of science. So we know that students are all taking biology and chemistry, so we've hit those, but the question that we're looking at is what do students take after chemistry? We did a 10-year analysis here, and in orange, you see full-year courses, so that would be your physics and your environmental science. And that's had a little bit of a decline, if you just look at, try and look at the orange there, over the last 10 years. We've seen an increase, we saw an increase in the semester electives, and then that's starting to go down now as well, and then our AP courses have kind of been steady, if you look at the past 10 years. So it looks like students are taking less science, and that has to do with a couple of things. It has to do with the introduction of AP psychology. When that happened, that shifted a lot of students from physics to that. Also, with the advent of AP seminar, AP research, and now our business curriculum, we've had a lot of offerings that are competing with what students take. You can specifically look, if we're looking at physics, that's the area that we have the least number of students taking, and if we look over the past 10 years, for some of the reasons that I've talked about before, we see a declining trend in physics, and that's a little bit concerning, but we don't, we're not concerned about the physics program as much as we're, we know that there's competition, and that's why, you know, some of those numbers might be happening. So, the reason that this is a problem is because we currently are a state where every student is expected to interact with every standard, in science, in math, and, you know, in all of our content areas. And right now, because of our current course sequence, that's not really happening. So if we look here, 40% of our students take environmental but do not take physics. So for those students, they're not, they don't have access to 15% of the state standards. There's about 90 to 100 state standards, I don't remember the top number off the top of my head, but that gives you a sense. We're not talking like 15%, it's like two or three. And then if we look at the 30% of our students who take physics but don't take environmental science, they don't have access to 27% of the standards, so over a quarter. And then if we look at 8% of our students who are just taking semester electives, and they aren't taking either physics or environmental science, they're missing 31% of the state standards. This is a problem that we encounter. It is a problem that every high school in the state is grappling with, and I don't think anybody has found a great solution yet. It's tough because we have to balance giving our students choices with making sure that we do what's required. So, a really easy solution, which a lot of schools have done, is to add an additional course freshman year. So rather than taking biology freshman year, students take an earth science class that kind of incorporates some physics, they don't have to take physics later, that does the earth science, so they don't have to worry about environmental science, then they take biology as a sophomore, chemistry as a junior, and it really just sets them, like our students, back a year from where they currently are. So that's not really ideal. A lot of students require students to take a full year of biology, a full year of chemistry, and a full year of physics. I think that's what a lot of schools are switching to. I was a physics teacher, but, and so while I like the idea that every student should have access to physics, it didn't seem fair to require a full-year course that we never required before, and that, and limiting students' choices, and you have to take a full year of this, a full year of this, a full year of this, and then you can start taking the courses that you want. So we tried to balance these concerns the best we could, and we came up with this idea, and I will, I would like to hear credit, the teachers at the high school, because we gave a lot of options to them, and we had a lot of discussions about this. This is something we've been thinking about for a really, really long time. We had a lot of great conversations, we had a lot of hard conversations. We always want to make sure that whatever we're doing is what's best for our students, and this is what we landed on. So we landed on a proposed course sequence where our students take biology and chemistry as they do, but rather than require, telling students you have to take this thing in your third year, we want to keep the option, or we want to keep those options for our students and give them choices. So what we've kind of done is we've created a system where you still have to take the three years of science required by the state, but you can meet that by your biology in blue, your chemistry in orange, that you always had to take before, and then you just have to take something that's yellow and something that's green. So there are something yellow would be like your physics, you check your physics box, and then something with green would check your environmental science box. So, someone could take, someone who's really interested in environmental science, rather than having to take that full year of physics, by creating a half semester elective, and I'll talk about those in a second, you can take biology, chemistry, your AP environmental science, and then you can take a half-year elective, your senior year, which plays a physics. And the same thing works the other way. You could take biology, chemistry, physics as a full year, and then take your half-year environmental science. For students who only want to take three years of science, science isn't their favorite thing, or the thing they're most interested in, they can take biology, chemistry, and then one year of those two electives. So you can still meet the requirements of the state in three years, and we're not asking students to take more than that, but we know a lot of them will take more than that, and that's why we created these half-year options, which I'm really, really excited about. The goal was to create, you know, when we create these courses, if I want to major in engineering, mechanical engineering in college, I'm probably going to take the full-year physics, and I would encourage students to do that. So, what we've done is we've tried to create a course that was high motivation and high interest for students who might not have taken physics before, but interested in that. So that course, we're calling CP Physics of Sports, and it's, it's, we're looking at all the physics concepts, but through the lens of sports. So, you know, when we talk about, you know, projectile motion, that comes up in a lot of sports. It also comes, you know, so we think about like kicking a football, kicking a soccer ball, hitting a baseball, but it could also be like a dancer, leaping across the stage. So there's a lot of opportunities to use context that are relevant to students and exciting to them as we learn physics. So while this course certainly won't go into the depth of a full-year physics course, it will provide full exposure to these, these ideas, these physics ideas at a conceptual level, and we're hoping that this is a project-based course that students find really interesting and exciting. One of the ideas that I thought, the department came up with, that I hadn't thought of, that I thought was really great, was to relate this to electromagnetism. They were going to talk about like wearables, and how they work, and what we can use them for, and I thought that was an interesting thing. So, one thing that we know right now about science education is that when you base your instruction in a phenomenon that's exciting to students and makes them think and makes them curious, that's the best thing to do. So we know, like, it used to be that you turned and write, it was like, chapter seven, and chapter seven was on momentum, and then you learned, like, okay, this is how I do one de collision, this is how I do two de collisions. Well, now, it can start with a billiards game, right? Let's figure out everything we can about how this works and why this works this way, and why some people are better at pool than others, and what are they thinking about when they're doing this? And so you'll still get to all that information about collisions, but you're grounding in that context that helps students sustain their interests, but then also relate what they're doing back to something that's relevant to them. And then our environmental science course that we're creating is called CP Engineering for Resilience Natural Disaster. So this is a course focused on natural disasters that unfortunately we see more and more of, we think about the hurricanes that we saw this year, the wildfires, and fires that affected our region that we don't normally, you know, hear a lot about. So this is a topic that's really relevant, really contemporary, and so this course aims to look at what are these natural disasters? Where do they come from? Why are they increasing in frequency? And what do we do about it? Right? Like, that's, that's the big issue that we all need to figure out. You know, we live in a place where we have a lot of shore communities. What do we do about that? What do we need to know? What's coming next? And this will be, I think, really relevant for our students and exciting for them. So just to go back to this, there's also one new change on another, or one, a third change here, and that's taking, before we have CP Anatomy and Physiology I and CP Anatomy and Physiology II, which are two separate electives that students take, they're semester-long, we're going to make them a one full-year course, and we're going to adjust the course to be an accelerated course and get accelerated waiting. And this is something that we believe will increase the amount of students who are interested in taking it. We find now that students are, some students who are interested in the health sciences, it's, you know, they might not be as motivated to take a course that's not accelerated, so we think this will increase the course taking in this. And also it will be representative of the work that they do, because anatomy and physiology in most high schools, especially most high schools like us, those J districts, is an honors-level course, so now our students will have access to that as an honors-level course. Some of the benefits of our new course sequence include that our students have access to all the scientific domains, which could increase their opportunities for science in the future, and also open up potential interests that they may not have realized they had before. And we also hope that this will benefit lifelong learning and help our students in their scientific literacy as they go on to make informed decisions as voters and citizens. We also know that there are some challenges for, there could be potential resistance from students who prefer specialization in a specific field, so a student who really likes chemistry, before they could just take biology, chemistry, and AP chemistry, and then be done. Right? And so now, we want to make sure that all of our students have access to all of those standards, and that they're going to, they have to take one of those physics courses and one of those environmental science courses, which could be achieved by the two half-year courses. So that's, that's something that we have to consider with this. Yeah, another challenge is the development of the new curriculum and purchase of new equipment, which is going to be some budgetary concerns that we're working on. And then finally, it could potentially put some stress on student course loads, as some students, like that chemistry student, for example, that I just mentioned, now needs to take a course that they weren't taking, they wouldn't have taken before. And so that leads us directly into question three, which started as, how can we optimize the allocation and utilization of instructional time? And then once we, curriculum-wise, made the changes in question two that I just discussed, we also then asked the secondary question, how will the changes we made impact our students' experience, and what can we do to alleviate that? So our current practice for instructional time is that, whereas a normal course meets for five course units a week, so typically that's, because we have our block schedule, so that's three short periods and one long period, our science courses meet for extra time. So our CP science courses meet for one extra 40 minute, or 40-minute period, and our accelerated and AP classes meet for two extras. So when you hear me talk about like six course units and seven course units, that's six is one extra, and the seven is two extra. And we asked our students, we did a survey of our students, and we asked them, like, what do you think about this extra instructional time? It's actually a hot-button topic in districts across the state. A lot of schools have already decreased instructional time for lab. In most, most, a lot of schools are getting rid of labs entirely, as schools come up with more creative schedules like we have. So when you had a traditional eight-period schedule, asking someone to do a lab in 43 minutes is not really possible, but with the advent of our new block scheduling, every class meets for 80 minutes a week, once a week, and that allows for that time. So as students, as schools come up with these clever schedules, a lot of times they're removing the lab periods. I was just speaking today to Lenape Regional District Supervisors, and they were telling me that this, like, a few years ago, and it's pretty common, they lost their instructional time, or they moved away from extra instructional time for their CP and accelerated classes, and they moved their AP classes to just an extra 20 minutes when they back up against lunch. So this is a trend that's happening all across the state, and so it's something we looked at, because that's what our peers are doing too. So we have the reason to look at this, because we want to make sure we're utilizing instructional time effectively. The second reason we wanted to look at this is because if we're creating a potential burden on course taking, we want to try and alleviate that as best we can. And the third thing is that we are looking into this because this is what our peers are doing, and we thought it was, is worth looking into for that reason as well. So, when we surveyed our students, 64% of our accelerated students say that the extra time allows more in-depth learning, which is a fantastic thing. And so, whatever decisions we make, we don't want to disrupt that. But then we also know that it's having long periods so many times a week can be challenging for our students. And so, 48% of our students say that they are, feel more tired or less engaged when they have longer periods. And now, I'm not like overly concerned about that number from an extra-period perspective, right? Because like, if you ask anybody to do something for longer, maybe sometimes that they're not totally interested in doing, right? That they, that might not come out that way. What I thought was interesting that our AP science students are also there at the halfway mark. So that's interesting. 53% of our students, though, think that they have just about the right amount of time for science, and so that, you know, is important to consider, but then if we also look at, 43% of them say that they're somewhat too much, or far too much time, in their opinion, for science. And the thing that I've always thought about a lot is this negative impact on course taking, because we, science takes up two periods in a schedule, instead of just one, it prevents students from taking a class that they might really be interested in. So if we look at like 35% of our students in accelerated classes say that they wanted to take another course but couldn't because science took up those two periods in their schedule. And so, we're looking at adjusting the instructional time. So this is our current practice. We always like to compare ourselves to other districts in our district factor group. So this is the comparison of Haddonfield to other J districts. You see our full-year CP courses in orange, accelerated in green, and AP in blue, and this is instructional time. So you see that we are above, and far above, in some cases, the other districts in instructional time. the other districts in instructional time. Um, and so our proposal, we are originally looking at changing accelerated and AP to six, so that CP accelerated and AP all have just the one extra period a week instead of two. Um, I'm going to show you what it looks like when we just change accelerated to six. As you can see, our green is still above the other school districts, and we're, we're really close with, you know, there's one that I think runs in Fairhaven. Um, so this doesn't lead us to be overly concerned about doing this, because our peer schools are doing what we're doing in that amount of time. Um, you know, I think we'd be more hesitant to do this if we dropped down below the other schools a lot. But this, uh, like, if we go back, you know, back and forth between those two slides, um, I think that, that change that we see, which is not a lot of change, we're still above all the other schools, says a lot. Uh, we ended up deciding for right now to keep our AP courses at seven, because we didn't want to change too many things at one time. But we recognize that we should revisit this before the next audit. So we recognize that we shouldn't wait another four or five years to revisit this, that we should see how things go with accelerated changing to six courses, or sorry, six course units a week, and then revisit the, the AP after that. And so some of the benefits include reduced schedule pressure, um, which allows students to have an additional free period for study hall, uh, with all of our students with in extracurricular activities, that would be really beneficial to them. Um, PE or an additional arts elective. Uh, one thing that Principal McHale has talked a lot about is working with some of the teachers, art teachers, who already do something like this, where students, if they miss one period of art a week, they can make that up during the, one of the longer lunch periods that they have. So that would allow students, if they're only missing one time a week, um, they can maybe take 3D art. And so now they can take their science class and an art class that they might be interested in, as opposed to not being able to take that course at all. Um, and that came up a lot in our discussion, like, is that, how do we feel about students missing one period of art a week for science? And I, I think I have a unique perspective as somebody who taught theater and physics. Um, and I absolutely would tell you that if I, if there was a student who was interested in theater, who had missed my class one day a week, versus not having that student take theater at all, I would absolutely say I want that student in my class. Um, and I would be so happy that that student had access to a course that was uh, exciting for them, interesting for them, and that I believe is important for them. Um, and so another benefit of this is that our AP science courses are, can move to a schedule where they are having their extra periods on the block days, which would mean rather than three eighty-minute periods a week, which they have now, they would only have eighty-minute periods twice a week. And that, obviously, we will talk about disengagement potentially during longer periods, that could help our students. Um, and then CP and accelerated courses have equal opportunities for lab experiences. Again, some challenges is that our courses and lab activities will need to be restructured, which can be done with curriculum work. That's part of the budgeting that we're, we're doing. Um, there's a possible impact on depth of coverage. Um, I don't believe that the impact will be significant. I think that there's a lot of instructional time that we can look at and become more efficient with. Um, and in case that there was something that students, you know, I, our first-year science classes here cover a lot more than most. So for example, our accelerated physics courses cover more topics than most first-year physics courses. And then when our students take AP physics, like, there's a, there's fewer things that are new. Um, by keeping the AP at seven for this year, that allows us to see if there was something, for some reason, that we just couldn't get to in that, in that accelerated chemistry or physics, we wanted to leave some instructional time in AP to, to allow for that if we had to. And then there's a potential shift of in-class work time, and that's why I talk about efficiency. Um, that's what I mean. But if there's like, let's say that there's a period where it's, okay, today's a work period, we're going to catch up, we're going to work on our lab, if you need to work on your lab, you can start reviewing for the test. That's something that students can choose to do in a study hall when they have that extra period now with the new schedule. And then they have the opportunity, if they can choose to work on their English paper or something, you know, so giving the students that flexibility to make the choices that are right for them, if they're just going to be doing some extra work time, um, is, is, I think, a good thing. So just to summarize, we have two new courses, our Physics for Sports and Engineering for Resilience Natural Disasters, which will be half-year electives that students can take to satisfy the graduation requirement. We have a course change with anatomy and physiology from CP half-year to half-year CP courses to one full-year accelerated course. We're having the, the additional graduation requirement, where we're, we're telling students, you still have to take biology and chemistry, but that you can still accomplish it in three years. We have to make sure you take one unit of physics and one of environmental science. That could be the full year or the half year. And then we're proposing that instructional time for our accelerated courses, changes from seven to six units per week. AP maintains seven and CP maintains six. Does anybody have any questions?
This, this made me think, which isn't exactly, it's more of a shout-out to you and Tammy, because I know the schedule's crazy. But the one thing of having had, you know, high schoolers, and one particularly who loves the sciences, the accessibility of the teachers and the time built in where kids can go for extra help and the availability of the teachers is really something you don't see a lot in high schools. And it gives it that college feel of office hours, and they can go and they can get that extra help. I think that offsets some of the scheduling time that's not built in, because there is that, they get that frequent, um, like, I know Tommy has some times where he's built into a schedule, like, this is where I'll go during this free period, and the teacher always seems to be there, um, which is, I just think that's incredible. And that's, I know that a lot went into the scheduling and goes into the planning. I can't imagine trying to build schedules. So I appreciate that. And it shows how much we value that one-on-one working with, with the students.
It's a very, why?
Yeah, I mean, it is, like, to me, I just hear, I, I, and AB used to do the same thing, but I feel like with the sciences particularly, because it is so much like, to, to work through it, and maths, to go work through it with somebody is, I, I just think that that's really something that we just don't see a lot in high school.
And that's a huge shout-out to our teachers.
Yeah, it really is. I think they're always there. I'm like, he was there, he's like, no, he was there, I'm like, it's.
They're very willing to use their time when they're not teaching to work with students, and that's really nice to see.
Yeah, it really is, and makes a huge difference.
I love the two new elective courses. I think they're super exciting. It makes me wonder, are we going to drop any courses? Do we have enough teachers to cover all these whole things? Like, how does the?
Astronomy kind of.
Yes, I, that was one that I forgot to mention. So one thing, so yes, we are proposing that we are not going to, we're not going to take anything off the books. But for next year, we're proposing, proposing that we don't run astronomy. There's been a significant decline in course participation recently. So we think that that's the one that we probably won't run next year, but we're going to keep it, um, in case that ever changes. We're going to, we're keeping it on the books. Like, it's not going to be like, we're not removing it as a course, or we're not going to run it, yeah, yeah, next year. Um, and so we are also open to exploring that with the other electives too. But for this year, we're just going to see where it happens. And you know, a lot of what, what happens with course selection might determine a lot of this too. Because if, if, if a kid who would have taken forensic science before, now is like, hey, that CP Physics of Sports class sounds really interesting, I'll take that instead. Um, and then four people sign up for forensic science, we won't run the course. And that's where, I mean, like, not that I want to take kids out of other courses that, you know, but the goal was to create courses that are standards-based, that are covering the standards that students are expected to know, and doing it in a way that's hopefully exciting and motivating for them.
And interest change, and I think that's a perfect example of adapting to the times of what students want to go into study, what they're interested in. Um, yeah, I think it's creative. I love the project-based learning aspect of it, I think. I like it.
So, and they, Tammy and Matt rang simulated schedules.
Yes.
And it does work. And that's like, Matt typed in every senior script, every science course, every senior took this year in a spreadsheet. It worked a lot, I can't, incredible amount of work. The whole committee.
I mean, and that, because that, and that was really important to us, that we wanted to look at what students have taken and what they are taking, and what, does this create a problem for students? Or the first question was like, the reason I did it in the first place was, are we trying to fix a problem we don't have?
Right.
Right? And so the only way to get that information was to go through every senior's transcript and put it in. Are, what class are you taking? What class are you not? I mean, sometimes, some, some, some of our students are taking eight, nine science courses, you know, in, in, in high school. And that's, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Um, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, can every student do this with the new requirements? And we, we hadn't found a student that couldn't. Um, and you know, the high school's really great at working with every student and creating a plan and being flexible. And we know students, as we, this will now be something that the counselors are all on board with this, and they, they're going to make plans for students, you know, when we're going to have that, those talks, you know. If you want to take these courses, if this is what you're interested in, this might be the path you're looking at. How can we plan your four years so that you make sure that you hit all of those things? Uh, just uh, being flexible as we always are to make sure that um, this isn't creating an unnecessary burden for our students.
My only other comment was, one of your slides said the challenge of students kind of resisting these changes because they want to focus on a field. But that's not really our local challenge. The state has adopted these standards. And so we are just enforcing standards that the State Department of it has set. So I would fade that. I don't think that's a challenge. I think we are meeting what we're being asked to do, so.
Thank you for saying that. No, I was like, I didn't really talk about that. I'm glad you pointed that out, because that's been my point, like, throughout this whole process, is that as we try and fix something, um, we're not doing this because, like, I do, I really do believe this is good for students to take all of these things.
Science majors are good. I'm not, I'm not, I am not arguing with the decisions I've been made. But these are, this is the handbag doll, and you guys are doing a great job with it. So I would scrap that.
Okay. That's a good suggestion, but you're, you're absolutely right. And I think that's what we've been, like, this is something that we're doing because we believe in it.
Yeah.
But it's also something we are required to do. And it's something that we have to, we are required to make sure all our students are in courses that access all of the standards.
Right. And I think by doing the semester-long, you're keeping flexibility up, so a student can still do more than one chemistry course, or more than one biology, or more than one environmental, or more than, like, you're still giving that flexibility. So that isn't really an issue. You all have done well.
Thank you.
Yeah, my only, oh, sorry, did you have something? No, listen, um, I, I do like for, for the kids that are science-based, that there are more options, because science has felt a bit limited. So I love that, that you're doing that. I, I will tell you that I, I caution you when you talk about taking time away from AP courses, and specifically physics, I mean, that's a difficult course. I know that kids are needing to spend their own time right now to figure things out for themselves. That's a tough course. Um, taking time away worries me with that particular course. So I would look at that very cautious.
Okay, thank you.
I, um, I just want to give a little plug for, and I know you guys always consider this, but I think it's just something that would nag me, is um, really thinking about supporting the teachers as they develop the curriculum for those more specialized classes. Um, because there's so much to be said for like, more collaborative processes when you're developing a course like that. And so I just want to make sure, you know, that we have support systems for the teachers who are going to be doing that. And, you know, I know you guys will. But I just think courses like that, because of the creativity involved in creating it, um, it really helps to have a collaborative process. So I just think that that would be great.
That's a thing too, and some of the electives that we're maintaining, now that you have a kiddo who knows some physics, who weren't guaranteed to know before, does that have any impact on the courses we're keeping? I don't know. I mean, I don't understand all of the topics, but.
No, that's a really good point. And one of the things that we, that's through this is that those electives, you have to take biology and chemistry before them, whereas all of our electives before, you could start taking as a sophomore.
Okay.
So now, now that we know what students have, you're right, we can do different things, we can do more things, and, and that's really exciting too. The same thing with uh, anatomy and physiology, with it being an accelerated course, it's going to be a junior and senior course. And when you think about it, you know, knowing that students have taken a full year of biology and a full year of chemistry, and we can guarantee that every student being in that class has taken it, that opens up a lot more that you can do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, um, curriculum committee?
Yeah, uh, we met last week. I will give a quick update. Um, good meeting. We began with some new course recommendations uh, that Katie ran through with us, one around becoming a historian during history at the local level, and one on um, creative writing. Both sound really exciting, make us wish we were back in high school. Um, and I thought it was super interesting that uh, the first course relating to becoming a historian has ties into other initiatives underway tied to the HMHS one-hundred-year milestone celebration. So that's kind of interesting, um, that we're bringing that to life with students, engaging them in all kinds of ways to um, celebrate that exciting milestone. Uh, work also underway around reviewing the electives that are offered, determining whether we need to revise the offerings to engage a wider audience. And let's say we talked about the creative writing class as an emerging area of interest for students, which will include multiple different types of writing. We talked a little bit about that in the context of a world where AI is becoming increasingly prevalent, and that writing itself is an art, writing as a human is an art. So, interesting stuff. Um, timeline for the curriculum development conversations uh, is February professional development and over the summer. And again, emphasize our administrative teams really listening and being responsive to what students are asking for, which is exciting. We talked a little about newly recommended supplemental materials, phonics booster bundle, and the UFLI Foundation's programs. So these are intervention programs based on uh, how we can support our elementary school programs and educators better with additional phonics programs.
And they're on the agenda.
And they're on the agenda too. Then we talked about some newly recommended textbooks, uh, which we will look at shortly, which also sounds super interesting. And then a lot of conversation that I will not recap uh, was based on Mr. DiNardo's uh, recommendations from, for the science audit and the really thorough and thoughtful presentation that he just gave us. That was it.
Questions for May? Hey, Greg?
No updates.
No updates. Um, Rachel? No updates. Rachel?
We met, the policy committee met on the sixth. We have just one, not right, just one, for a second reading. And hopefully you took notice, thanks to Gino and crew, there's some different highlights in there. Those are just after the first reading discussion, we went back to it, the committee and also the administration, and made a couple more clarifying tweaks into the language. So those highlights are in there, and the different colors are just like the different times they were edited, you know, like, one pass was yellow, and then the policy committee talked, and then another passes orange, or whatever the colors are.
This particular policy was a hard one to not micromanage it, because by nature, you want policy to provide clarity, but there's also some interpretation that's intended because of the innumerable situations that can come up. So a policy can address every variable, but based on the most significant ones that we have experienced over the past one to two years, we attempted to clarify procedure and language in this one. So we'll go for sure around, around May or June, whether we hit the mark on that, but we think we did.
Yep. And so we spent some time talking about the, that same issue. We also reviewed mattering of policies for review. So what the policy committee does is our, we get some policies that we need to vote on, that need changes because the state has made some legal changes or requirement changes. But then we also just periodically check how our policy's doing. And so we looked at professional services, district organization, the organizational chart, the management team, the staff liaison committees, the affirmative action, board superintendent relations policy, the eligibility of resident and non-resident students, professional services, right, like a smattering. And mostly, those were just teeny changes, like, he, she, they, or we forgot to scratch out a two that was crossed out and never got deleted, little things like that. We did spend some time discussing the eligibility of resident and non-resident students a little bit more, because we have the Rotary in town that offers our students some international experience.
Yeah, that was more international. That wasn't, I didn't want to confuse that with anything, like, we're talking about J-1 visa.
Right. And that's what that policy is called. Yeah. But around J-1 visa and F-1 visa, we listen to letter combinations. And so, we used to be certified, and our certification, we didn't, we lapsed, and so we didn't renew it, because the school becomes responsible for any student that we sponsor, and I mean, Homeland Security responsible. And so that feels a little bit different, and maybe something we don't want to get ourselves potentially involved. And it just feels super complicated. And so, but we're wondering if we want to reconsider the F-1 visa.
We currently accept F-1.
Yeah.
But not J-1.
But the Rotary is basically J-1.
Rotary exchange is a J-1. So our thought process is, because we have students going abroad, and part of that problem is we have to accept students, exchange. So we're looking at, in language, we say, J-1 visas for Rotary exchange only. So that way we can't, because the difference is, county can tell you horror stories about how many times you don't Homeland Security, we are basically securing visas for people when that happens, in essence. Rotary does that. So we would have to do nothing, but Rotary would take care of all that stuff. So it would be...
Mutually beneficial.
Mutual beneficial, and, and in essence, we could be, we would be denying opportunities for our students. We have one student right now, currently South America, and they had talent, took the hit for that one, I guess, did that. And there's one next year that's also going to go abroad. In order to keep those opportunities for our students, we're looking at making sure we can do that for a quarter.
Yeah. And so we're talking with the little team, and that will be up sometime next year for us to talk to them.
We're gonna get, we're gonna turn it on in January, because the place, the process starts in the spring, so.
Yeah. And I'll take a two, two readings to make it. I think that's the other one.
Questions?
Sounds...
All right. Linda, you don't have anything for the LRFP committee?
No, well, actually, May let us know. That's why I'm here.
Surprise. So we all know that that happened Tuesday night. Wednesday morning, or Wednesday early afternoon, we had our first LRFP meeting. So, you know, all of the work that has gone up until now, but now the real work starts. It was a good meeting. It was a regroup, and it's like, okay, bring it on, what's next? We talked about how community engagement and community conversations have been so important to get us to this point, and that we see this project just as a continuation. There needs to be that continued communication. This is what's going on, and this is how we're doing, this is, we're on track, and all of that. And we said, you know what, Mike said that they're gonna be having bi-weekly meetings with our construction manager. And we said that we would have, in our LRFP meetings, we will have a monthly update as to what's, what's going on. We want to know right from the construction manager what's happening, and pictures, when, when there are pictures. And then we'll bring that to this meeting, and we'll keep everybody, we'll keep the board up to date, we'll keep the community up to date. And then we said, you know, we'll keep the website up to date as well. We'll, we'll put those minutes from these meetings onto the website as we get pictures, and as we can check off this project or this project is done, we'll keep that on, on the website. And then we started talking about, really, what's next. And there are a couple of things that we've identified. Chuck and Mike are gonna meet with the architects, but they've already been thinking about what's next. And if there are some low-hanging fruit projects that we can get going, and, and they can start procuring the materials, then perhaps we're in a good spot, because materials aren't gonna cost today what they will cost three years from now. So what can we get rolling with now? And then, one of the questions that we heard more than anything else during this entire time was, if the referendum passes, how quickly can we have full daycare? And Chuck has been thinking about it, coming up with different ideas, and rolling some things around. So he's gonna try and be creative with options, and we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit more, but...
Right. We are gonna try to be as aggressive as we can. And I worked, I was with Shannon today, I've been thinking about this for a long time, too, about possibilities of lottery-based tuition, full daycare. So if we, if, once we get, once we get rooms open in one building, rather than have vacant rooms sitting there, we'll use them until they all come along, until we can get the whole district wide. But, you know, that's, that's, that's what we're looking at doing. And I would think by, before spring, I can lay out for you the details of the plan that would make that possible. And I was thinking one thing, and Shannon's like, oh, if we did this, we could do more than that. So we're looking at finding, open up three sections first with. So there's all kinds of that type of stuff happening. But when we meet, we're meeting with Monday or Tuesday, but I won't show you.
We'll figure it out.
Figure it out. But one of my questions will be, can we make sure that the central school expansion is high on all this, right? Because at one point, we're thinking, maybe it should be low, that way it doesn't open up before the other schools, that way it's coordinated that way. But we'll talk and say, can we make this a priority? You know, as long as money-wise, it doesn't make, make sense. Can we make this a priority? Should we start moving forward that, start putting those things in place?
Yeah. It's great, because I mean, we know, it'll, it'll be years before all of the schools can have full daycare. But, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we're hearing from the community, this is really important, and that our administrators have already been like, what can we do? How can we be creative? We can't give it all, but can we get something to, you know, get out there and, and have people start seeing the difference that this makes? So here we go. And we will, this will now be an active conversation that we have every single month, and we'll keep reporting back where we are as far as timelines and finances, and be completely transparent about all the projects that are going on.
And we talked about revamping the website, which Linda's been integral in from the get-go, and really finding out, we don't know exactly what our, what our, what our routine will be, but to routinely post updates for the community, just like we have the website, for people to go to learn about the bond referendum, which I, we think really had an impact. I mean, we saw the numbers of how many people were going to that website, and they were pretty dramatic, especially around times of mellers, right before the vote. And it was, it, that's what we want. Like, we were, we were talking about, Mr. Klaus went, visited the high school, some of the high school classes to talk about the referendum. And what I'm learning, just from hearing about from the kids, is that that impact, could it, could it impact the votes? I'm not sure. But it, it made them civically aware. And to understand that this is part of my responsibility, to know what's going on in my community, and to, to inform people who are misinformed, because, and they, of course, aren't processing it, like, understanding this is what they're doing, but I'm catching the correcting each other. And it's so cool to watch how they are, as young people, understanding civic engagement is important. Part of that is the responsibility of those people in, in leadership, making the information accessible to you, being transparent, which is always something we've tried to do. And we've talked about how we want to continue that as we go into this, into the actual construction phase, and being accountable, and making sure that people can see what's going on, and be aware of themselves. Yeah, that's great.
And I think what we also want to do is, we want to thank each and every member of this community, from the people who were out there and putting organizations together and getting the word out, to people that opened their homes, to coffees and get-togethers, to, you know, people that were just out there spreading the word organically. I mean, so many people were an integral part of this, and it is really the support of the entire community coming together that made this happen. And I don't think that we could possibly name the, all the people that we want to thank, because so many people were so important in this.
Yeah, we, I was actually gonna say some of this at my...
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's okay. Now, I'll just, I'll just say it. But I agree, because we had said, should we make, there's so many people to name. And so, so many people in the community have gathered around this, whether or not it was either their fight to fight, we often would hear, oh, well, you know, seniors are gonna come out against, and it wasn't the case. People saw the value in full day kindergarten, and the value of having accessibility in our schools. And we were able to answer those questions. And there, it was a, there was resounding of the amount of people who didn't have children in the school who supported these, because that's the kind of community we live in. Sorry, Chris, my...
Yeah, pretty great. Seventy-eight percent, four out of five voters were supportive of this referendum.
And, and I also want to say a very big thank you to the administrators, to our staff, our faculty. Everyone's been part of the team, and from, from the beginning, and the community from the beginning, when the visioning session started. I want to say a special thank you to Mr. Klaus for all that he's done. His roots in this district for, is it over 30 years, had really gave him an insight to what we needed at every level, at a way that most of us could never see, that our architects coming in could never really understand what resonates with this community like he does. And getting to say, I'm gonna embarrass you for a minute, when we were at Mabel Kay, and he had a fan, and I was just, I was tearing up as she was like, just, you know, so appreciative of how much he has cared about our community. And I think that that really is, is pivotal to our having put together a referendum that was able to really meet our community's needs, integrate those vision sessions, and, and then yet inform people so that they understood what that bond said actually said, you know, because that wasn't the easiest to read. So, so I'm gonna thank, thank everyone. Okay, questions for Linda? PTA updates?
Tatum had a virtual meeting that I was having a couple getting at, and she was not, I think, more than we, but it was just them voting on a few items to kind of keep exploring. But, yeah, proved a few things.
And TANPTA had the reflections at the public library on Tuesday, I think it was?
All right, let's, Dr. Priolo, anything for the...
No reports tonight.
Mr. Klaus?
No reports tonight.
My report, we, we go under, she's going to go under, but that's okay, because we have another big announcement. We want to thank Rachel Brown for her review of this. So we thank you. This is something to show our appreciation. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. This has been an awesome experience. Yeah, I would recommend it.
And, you know, I really want to thank Rachel for, I feel like every member brings something, you know, unique to the group. And I feel like you had a really good way of bringing up, grounding us in our conversations to what's really important, like, why are we really talking about this? What's really at stake here? And it helps center us when we get emotional and responsive, to really just focus on what is, what is, what is our goal here. And so I thank you for bringing that to our...
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. You have three, members of the community are invited to speak for up to three minutes at this time. If you'd like to make an additional comment, please wait until each person has had a chance to make their initial statement. All comments must be directed towards the board, not members of the public. This is an opportunity for the board to listen, but not debate issues and under question and answer period. Please be aware that not all issues brought up before the board meeting will be resolved that evening. We ask you to identify yourself by stating your name and the name of your street. While public education can be an emotional issue, we strive to maintain a certain level of decorum at the meeting. Public meetings are streamed and available for replay on YouTube, and students often participate in meetings. As such, citizens are expected to maintain a tone of privacy and civility. Anyone like to make a comment?
Good evening, everyone. So my name's Tom Woodcock. I live on Lake Street, I have two children, one in district, one currently out of district. I just wanted to make a general comment tonight. So I believe in the value of inclusion. I think inclusion's something that's very important for all students, not just students with disabilities. I think there's great value for our whole community. I did want to acknowledge first, I think that I've seen some great things coming out of our district, right? We're achieving a lot. A lot of our students are doing really well, really positive things coming out of it. I've seen great things from our Director of Special Education, but there's always room for improvement. I think that, you know, until every student has access to the general education classroom and all the resources that every other student does in the district right now, we, there's still room for improvement. When we talk about inclusion, inclusion's a great idea. It's more than just a great idea. I think it's something that we all have a moral obligation to really work towards. It's something that is mandated by law. So you're probably familiar with least restrictive environment laws. This says that we need to first look at the general education classroom, where it's the least restrictive environment, and start there as a default. Unfortunately, what I've seen every now and again is that we sometimes look at medical models when we're evaluating a student with a disability. We're looking at their disability, their needs, and looking at how we can fix that. What we should be doing is what we call the social model, where we're looking at what is the environment, what are the barriers there in the environment, and looking at how we can break down those barriers so that the student is able to succeed in the least restrictive environment. That's where we really need to get to. It's not just about the academics, though. It's also about social skills. It's about the student's self-esteem. It's about relationship building. These are all things that are very important, especially for students with disabilities who are commonly put in rooms away from other students. And it's, it's something that's not just for those students, it's something that's gonna be really valuable for the students that do spend time with those students with disabilities as well. And so I think the take-home message, I'm pretty getting close to time, is that I think everything you do, whenever you're looking at new initiatives, new programs, new courses, please think about inclusion, how you're gonna include every student in the district. Not just AP kids, not just the kids who are neurotypical, but everyone. So that's my message. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Any other comments? Okay. We will close public comment and move on to our voting. Governance, acceptance of monthly HIV vandalism violence report, approval of the 2526 academic calendars, approval of the 520, 5120 time students, approval of fire and security drill report. Motion? May? Nushin? Questions? Yes.
Mr. Essener?
Yeah.
Ms. Hollenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Knuckles?
Yes.
Ms. Sadek?
Yes.
Vice President Ho-Curtle?
Yes.
President Crook?
Yes.
Curriculum, special education, approval of field trips, conferences, travel, overnight field trips, textbook approval, supplementary instructional resources approval, resolution between the Board of Ed and Brookfield Schools, resolution between the Board of Ed and Walsh Legacy, resolution to approve a semester-long academic elective for students to becoming a historian, doing history at the local level, resolution to approve a semester-long academic elective for creative writing, resolution to approve two new courses in accordance with the K-12 science audit, resolution to approve a level change in accordance with recommendations of the K-12 science audit, CP and ME 1 and 2, moved to an accelerated course. Motion? Linda, Greg, questions, comments? Just want to, again, reiterate, thank you to everyone who worked on the science audit and who worked for the development of the new electives.
I was curious about the creative writing, and I know you mentioned it in your report, Meg, that you all talked about it at curriculum. Because in the proposal, there's a poetry course that we already have on the books, but it doesn't appeal to everyone, so I see the expansion. But in the proposed course, it seems like half of it's gonna be poetry, or am I misreading it?
I think they're integrating poetry, but, and I also...
Multiple different styles.
There are multiple different genres, is that. So they're gonna, they're gonna make sure they keep that poetry, because there are some students who do look forward to that. But they're going to hopefully appeal a bigger mix, because the poetry course hasn't been running, because not enough students just want poetry. So they're hoping the creative writing, by integrating the poetry into the creative writing course, will appeal to more students.
Okay. I just love the becoming of the story.
I know. It's so cool. I want to go back to high school.
I know, we do offer a lot of unique classes for our small districts, so that's really cool.
I was already talking to Mr. Reer, so the first one could be the 100th anniversary of the place. I remember that, what's gonna be that, Bankof would be a great research hub, that would be magnificent, that's a tap stock. Like, there's things in this town you can go see that really... Like there's things in this town you can go see that really, I mean, interesting history.
Yeah, even the PACO, how fascinating would it be to that? Because I know that the PACO, whoever it was that it, that was, like when it was being built in Hadenfield, they fought to put it underground so that it didn't change the landscape. And what must have gone into that at the time, that would be, I mean. Okay, anything else? Meg?
Mr. Assenblair?
Yes.
Ms. Hollingworth?
Yes.
Mr. Knuckles?
Yes.
Ms. Sadek?
Yes.
Vice President Hope-Gurle?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Yes.
President Crook?
Yes.
I was just thinking like at PACO, like in Facebook, we would have like records of like what people were saying in case. It probably looks very different back then. Okay, personnel, approval of new personnel transfers, salary upgrades, mentoring, extracurricular coaching appointments, needs of access, accommodations. Resolution to approve Tammy Miller and Jay Copley to substitute one-on-one support for a student. Resolution to approve Michelle Barre to work alongside Dana Reganado on November 25th for a training. Resolution to approve Bethany Kirk to provide support for a student. Resolution for a student to receive home doubt instruction. Motion? Nushin and Meg? Questions?
I just wanted to say, congrats to all the sports team that makes, that made some extra weeks of coaching there.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know.
Across the board. And also thanks to our staff that volunteer for like, and get paid a ton of things, but I'm happy to pay them. Spirit Week and Powder Club, all that, like you do, fun and sad. And it's appreciated, people willing to.
It's a long list there. Hey, Mike?
Mr. Assenblair?
Yes.
Ms. Hollingworth?
Yes.
Mr. Knuckles?
Yes.
Ms. Sadek?
Yes.
Vice President Hope-Gurle?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Yes.
President Crook?
Yes.
Business and finance, payment of bills, budget transfers, board secretary's report, cash summary report. Motion?
Motion.
Linda and Greg? Comments, questions?
I'm just curious, Mike, and maybe this is a very good financials committee question, but when we do textbook approvals, how does that work financially? It was one thing I wondered, you know, like.
You're not approving.
Yeah, we aren't approving.
You just approved textbook, sorry, right. Like you're approving to use that textbook, not to buy it.
Got it, okay, okay. Cool, thank you.
Okay, you call them?
Ms. Hollingworth?
Yes.
Mr. Knuckles?
Yes.
Ms. Sadek?
Yes.
Vice President Hope-Gurle?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Assenblair?
Yes.
President Crook?
Yes.
Okay, approval of the following minutes. We started at 5:45, so it's. I should have had the cup of coffee, like I taxed it.
I did when I saw you.
Approval of the following minutes, executive session November 21st and regular meeting November 21st. Motion? Okay, Meg and Greg, any comments?
So the link for the executive session currently links to today's agenda for the executive session, which might not even make a difference because I'm sure you'll submit the correctors, so just.
That's the case.
Oh, you wouldn't hold off on approving it?
Well, I did.
Yeah, it was, yeah, I was. Yep, I thought it was this one. I don't.
Yeah, we should table that, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, because they weren't, the links weren't available as of Monday, so.
Oh, so today's exactly.
Yeah, they got added, yeah.
Yeah, today's agenda is for.
Yeah, we should table that. Thank you.
Okay, motion to table that? Nushin?
Yeah, make your motion.
Second, Rachel? Others in favor? I.
That's exactly what I thought of it. I thought I was the only one.
Now, well, are we done with that, though? Or we?
What board minutes have to be approved 30 days from last week?
It's always.
Well, can't we approve them at the?
Two shots last year.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're. I think it's, well, some of them are all or nothing. Either you did it every time or you get no.
I mean, this is, this is, I mean, they talk this one, this is, I would, we would explain this if they.
Better not to.
It was on your agenda, then the board didn't approve it, what that happened, they tabled it, this is what, just Mike messed up.
Okay.
We, so between we tabled and then we have to.
Okay. Regular one, okay. Can you call?
Mr. Knuckles?
Yes.
Ms. Sadek?
Yes.
Vice President Hope-Gurle?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Assenblair?
Yes.
Ms. Hollingworth?
Yes.
President Crook?
Yes.
Okay, any items for future consideration?
I actually just, so our next meeting will be the reorg meeting. I plan to get that out a week from tomorrow, Friday before winter break. There's a couple of board updates. Mr. Klaus, he mentioned the board meeting dates, so just take a look at that because that's what's going to be on the reorg agenda.
Yeah, I remember that. I think a lot to be in on for all of us.
Uh, what's that?
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was just me now that I'm looking at it. Oh, it was in the board.
Right. We've made changes to a couple of dates because of the budget timeline. And then also the reorg meeting, we're planning on a different day because, so statutory is going to be in the first seven days of the year. It's a weird year because the.
Yeah, crisis on Thursday.
Exactly, first of all.
I'm asking that question like I have zero.
So. Some things that you mentioned.
First of all, Wednesday, so we're off on the first, we're not coming in for one day on Friday.
Right.
So that's why it's.
Yeah, I think it's like whatever that Tuesday is, that first Tuesday.
Yeah. All right. Sounds good.
Mike, I know, like Jess might be here tonight because of concerts. Is it possible to ask for those kinds of things to not conflict with ones that's scheduled? But I mentioned to Jess, like, I'll bring it up as an idea.
You talk about the last news with T M, ready? Once he's around, we're going to ask.
And, and we also say, you get, you get to mess, you know? So we had thought about this over the years and it's almost impossible to never have conflicts. And that's why, you know, it's a pretty, you know, that's why it's like we totally understand, like.
And.
Steph was going to run back and forth, I'm like, you can, you can take a day, you know?